Before we jump into the meeting, I'd like to take a moment or two. Unfortunately, over the weekend, we lost one of our, what I call, Springford family. Ms. Privos from Rorschford Elementary suddenly passed away. She was a very well-respected guidance counselor at Rorschford. Over the years, has helped many students propel forward in their successful academic and other situations that may occur. She'll be greatly missed, and it'll be very hard to fill that position with somebody that was so dedicated and so involved with their students over Rorschford. So with that, I'd like for us to take a moment of silence. Thank you. With that, do we have any announcements?
School is back in swing, from back-to-school socials to homecoming parade, to the first concert of the season. We're excited to get things to all things Springford. Check the Springford website at spring-forne.net for information about upcoming events, important dates, and more. Thank you.
Thank you. Public to be heard on agenda items only. We do have one action item on the agenda this evening.
Second.
Most second and comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, committee reports, curriculum and technology, Ms. Heaney.
Thank you. The Curriculum and Technology Committee met on Thursday, September 6th. We started our meeting, as always, with some good news, and that was that the Curriculum and Technology Committee continues to reach out and engage with Springford families. They started the year by participated in Back to Springford Night, which was a big success for the third year in a row. They appreciate the teachers' support and the opportunity to partner with families. Specific to curriculum, two events that have already been scheduled for this year are Math Night, which is quickly approaching, I know it sounds strange, but November 12th, and Literacy Night, which will be held on March 26th, barring any snow. We had issues with that one last year. All right, on to the curriculum updates. The first update was for Act 339, and there is a scheduled presentation for next weekend regarding Act 339. PD is requiring, again, all schools to complete a plan outlining their school counseling program. This includes aspects of the new ESSA requirements for college and career readiness as well. And the team has been working on that plan over the course of the last two years. For data updates, the Future Ready PA Index is set to release in October. There will be a data presentation on October 27th of that information. The curriculum and instruction team has seen a very small preview and will continue to review the new dashboard system when it opens to the public. They've analyzed all key data to date, including Keystone's PSSAs, end-of-year, and beginning-of-year testing. Ramquest is up and running in grades five and six, thanks to the Ramquest teachers for all their hard work this summer in getting the 5-6 curriculum built. NWEA testing has begun, and much work took place over the summer to prepare for this, to get the teachers, the administrators, and technology ready to implement this assessment system. Much time and energy was spent, and while the system is now up, they look forward to utilizing the information to help all students grow and succeed. For the ELA update, the pre-kindergarten readiness program took place this summer, and we had 22 students that participated in the program. For the math update, we discussed focusing on K-12 number talks in the classroom, and professional learning will be provided to teachers. Are also excited about this new focus on numbers. And the new curriculum for Algebra II implementation has begun with training and support in place. Additionally, there will be curriculum review starting for K-4 math, as well as all of health, PE, FCS, and art. And the team will also be looking at 10th grade social studies curriculum. Additionally, there were two, sorry, new teacher orientation and inductions took place prior to school with 20 new teachers in attendance. For the technology updates, the network upgrade, and that added 630 access points, and 133 switches were deployed to upgrade our network in preparation for the technology usage current and future planned. The technology refresh took place over the summer as well, and they deployed 4,158 pieces of equipment, and we're working to complete staff iPads in the next week after the meeting, which was refreshing 123 of those, as well as then visiting the buildings just to see how things were going. The technology team is also working on the interactive projector project, which is Phase 2 of 5, and that is to refresh several interactive projectors. They have also started to prepare for modernized learning for next year, and getting the ninth grade center prepared, as well as looking at policies, communications, and implementation continues. And lastly, the technology team has identified a new help desk system in Fresh Serve, and that is a help desk and inventory system as well. This is a budgeted item, and it will be on the agenda for purchase, and is approximately $22,000, and again, that is budgeted. For the curriculum and technology initiatives together, the modernized learning has begun, and the cohort are in full staff, and the seventh and eighth grade teachers will start to receive training this year under similar concepts and implementation of the learning model. And of course, the hybrids are all up and running. And our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 2nd at 6:30. Any questions?
So these are all operational updates. Is there anything new and exciting that curriculum's looking at, other than program refreshes? Because, I mean, we're kind of coming to the end of, I mean, like, modernized learning and all that, so like, what's on the horizon?
Well, obviously, that's a huge implementation in the next phase when we go to full deployment at ninth grade next year with the modernized learning project.
Right, well, I'm saying, is there anything new initiatives, things that we could be looking at from a curriculum standpoint?
From a curriculum standpoint, we discussed a little bit of that, and that is something that continues in... Okay, yeah, I mean, the Act 339 also helps us to focus more on the career aspect of the whole child here at Springford. And, you know, to your point of what else is new, we'll have to explore.
Dr. Gooden, Mrs. Heaney mentioned about the K-4 math curriculum being reviewed. I read an opinion piece last week in the Inquirer regarding math facts, and the fact that a lot of the core standards don't emphasize memorization of the math facts. And I wanted to know what we do here at Springford, because I think that math facts, memorization is sometimes a dirty word in education now, but I don't think there's any substitute for having every child know their math facts inside and out, because that's something you need for your life, not just when you're in elementary school.
If I'm not mistaken, Mark, we still focus on those basic math. I mean, you've got to know those things, the basic. But it's how in-depth it is, like, when we were in school, I'm really not sure. I know we're using the everyday math curriculum, and I'm not sure how much it circles around. And I'm looking out, my cam's not here, but I'm not sure how much memorization's in...
Yeah, but that's something you have to memorize. There's no substitute for drilling and drilling till you know them. And once you know them, you know them for your life. And I don't see how you can think on your feet as you get into your career, like, business world, and if you're in construction, being able to make assessments and estimations and getting a feel for anything that's presented to you that has numbers. Without knowing math facts, I think you struggle to be able to do that. And thinking on your feet is extremely important in many aspects of life. And if you ever go onto a store, and there's some discount given, and it's 10% off, and it doesn't come up correctly, and if you know your math facts, you look at it and say, "That wasn't right," and you say to the clerk, "That's not right," and they have to take out a calculator to calculate 10%. So, I mean, I think it's important that we make sure our students, when they come out of elementary school, know those math facts inside and out, every kid, not just the top kids.
And I do know, if you're speaking of, for example, you know, like, the one-minute time tests and things like that, there is, and I'll double-check it, but I thought we talked about it, and that we're moving away from those rather than having the kids feel pressured, and I'm looking at Katie, and she's agreeing with me. Okay, good. That we're moving away from those, but we're still reinforcing the learning model.
But I don't know how you would, if you, whether you know them in a minute or 50 seconds or a minute and a half, I don't think's important. The fact that you know them fairly quickly, and I guess the word is master them. You have to master those facts. And if we're moving away from that, I think that's a big mistake, because it'll affect you the rest of your life if you don't know those things.
Mr. Denner? We did talk about the number talks, and Heidi Rockland, who is my counterpart for math, is working with K-4 teachers specifically. That will help build some of those math understandings, math fact fluency. Like Mrs. Heaney said, we're not working on that one-minute drill, but we're definitely working on building math fact fluency.
So the answer to the question is, we do make sure our children master the math facts, or we don't?
Absolutely, we're working towards math fact fluency.
Great. I think maybe the techniques of teaching these things are probably evolving rather than the actual skills that are being learned. It's more individual learning and helping people deal with their deficiencies, with the achievement of getting the same skills in the end, but it's not the way we were taught.
But there's, I don't think there's any magic to teaching, having kids memorize them and drill them. It's nothing exotic. It's just something you have to do. I don't think any teaching techniques come into play. You simply memorize them and drill them and drill them till you know them inside and out, and how you teach them.
I think the people in the educational field probably disagree with you on that.
Yeah, well, they need to get out into the real world. And when you get in the business world and see that, how important it is to be able to think on your feet and know when numbers don't make sense and when...
I think they're in the real world, it's just a different world from yours. And the real world is that they're dealing with students who have special needs sometimes, and the things have to be addressed to meet the specific needs of those students. I have great confidence that they are teaching the skills that are necessary. And I guess, if you'd like to find out, go to one of the classes and see how they're doing.
I don't need to go to a class for somebody to say, "Yes, we teach our students so they master math facts." I don't think I need to go see that.
All right, I'm telling you, they are doing it. Is that enough? Or do you need to go to the class? I don't know.
So, you know, I brought this up a few years ago when we went to Common Core and Everyday Math. And I agree that there's been school districts that have gone down this road, and they went and they left it, because they didn't feel that Everyday Math was focusing enough on really the math, what I'll call, math rules and that. So when I brought this up, you know, the indicator was, you know, how well the students do on college boards. So when we started Common or Everyday Math here, do we know how many years ago it was? Because my concern was that it's too late. If we start to see a drop-off in math at the college, at the SATs. But I know that there's been, there's a lot of studies going on right now, because the United States, compared to the rest of the world, is deficient in math. So there are a lot of studies, and it'll be really interesting to see how those studies come out. The fortunate thing is, is that we'll have a whole generation of students that didn't focus on the math rules. Because I remember when my kids were going through it, they spent more time on drawing dots on a piece of paper, putting a greater than or less than sign, and it was more focused on where to draw the dots and connect the dots than actually explaining the difference between greater than and less than. So, but there are studies that are coming out now, and there's a lot of questions. Are we actually being successful with the Everyday Math, or are we doing a disservice to our students? And that's not necessarily here at Springford, that's throughout the United States.
Well, I think it's important to create a distinction between math and arithmetic. Math skills are totally different from arithmetic. You can have brilliant people in mathematics who maybe can't add a column of numbers or memorize how to write down 20 digits of pi, but they have abstract thinking skills, and that's where the world is operating today. Anybody can add numbers, you don't have to learn to add numbers. You have a thing in your pocket that will add all the numbers and do all the division that you need. And it's silly to spend too much time on things that can be done with a device that's in your pocket. You need to learn abstract thinking skills, and that's where math is, not in these arithmetic skills that you guys are talking about.
Good luck in the business world.
I just used an example.
Oh, the business world, come on. In the business world, are we adding numbers up, adding columns up? Are we taking averages? Are we doing 10% of this and 10% of that? Excuse me, if that's what our business world is doing, it's no wonder we're behind.
In the past, the board felt that .................................... Financing of the ................................................................................................................................................... In the past, the board felt that .............................................................................................................................. I don't know if we changed the plumbing out.
Let's not send the scare tactics out. Just because there's copper piping with lead solder doesn't necessarily mean that there's
It's just a discussion item, Mr. DeBello.
I understand that, but discussion items in school districts tend to take on a life of their own. So, I mean, let's just The good thing is that we're doing all the testing, we're being proactive, we're not being a district that's going to discuss in public that we're not doing it. We started this and we're moving forward and like I said, if anything does test a little high, it will be properly addressed. And the testing, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but the testing goes on, it's annual, right?
Yeah, the testing, in section 742 of the school code, it says annually in there. And at that point, our goal is to go through and do one test at every drinking outlet, get the results back, and then from there, everything's posted and identified after the testing. And then, you know, we may decide what the testing program looks like down the line after we test one year, whether or not we're testing every single year because of our results. If we come back, everything's clean, you know, we can maybe do it every and we would work out a strategy as to how long, whether we're going to do it every year or every other year moving forward.
What does it cost to do the testing? Is it basically just our own people and lab tests?
It's a third-party agency that actually collects the samples, takes the samples to the lab, provides you the test results and report.
Is it expensive?
We're working, once we get our final quantification, we are getting estimates in right now. We're using a base number of 800 drinking outlets to be tested and we're getting numbers based on that quantity from multiple vendors.
Is it somewhere, is it somewhere like between $25,000 and $50,000 or just a rough range?
One of the first estimates came in at $19,900 for 800 outlets to be tested.
That's I totally support us using a third party because I don't want to be accused of us just finding a good fountain and then testing 800 times at that same fountain. Because I'm sure somewhere along the line, some district will try to do that. Not us. Any other questions? Assistant Superintendent Report, Dr. Roach.
Thank you, Mrs. DeBello, and the school board. Just a quick update on the 10-day enrollment figures, which is the first numbers we take a look at. Springford actually has a slightly decreased over enrollment as compared to last year's 10-day enrollment by 71 students to drop to 7,936 students as of our 10-day enrollment. It was a very, very busy summer at the end there with new registrations and people coming in and out in 10 days gives us that opportunity to see where everything settles out. So I'll continue to monitor those numbers as we move forward through the year. Also, today began a new tradition at the Springford Area Ninth Grade Center that will be an annual event for all ninth graders. Today, each year moving forward, all ninth graders will participate in a powerful day of training, team building, and strengthening resiliency in each student. Starting today at 7:40 a.m., 13 ninth-grade homerooms have all participated in a team-building and resiliency activities that were led by students from the 1012 Center that were members of the resiliency and Avidium Clubs. The upperclassmen have been planning for today since last year, and they led their peers to interact with one another, collaborate, problem-solve, and work together to solve puzzles and challenges all while getting to know one another. The sessions were powerful for both the student leaders as well as the ninth grade participants. At the same time, the other 13 homerooms were participating in a specially-designed, student-focused QPR training led by instructors from across Montgomery County. As a refresher, QPR stands for Question, Persuade, and Refer, and it is a set of steps to help peers, friends, and anyone with proven suicide prevention strategies. The mission of QPR is to reduce suicide behaviors and save lives. The training was well-received, and kudos go out to Dr. Weinbaum, Dr. Cole, you're at the Ninth Grade Center for all the planning organization, as well as Mr. Rigner, Ms. Purdy, and Mrs. Hammond, who worked with our student leaders on planning for the resiliency side of that training. So after 90 minutes, the 13 homerooms switched places, and the other homerooms participated in the opposite training so that everybody had the same opportunity all day long. And then finally, off to lunch. So at this time, I'd like to share with everyone the final video of the QPR training that was first launched today and is now a second viewing that will go live tonight following our meeting. Part of our theme for convocation talked about the term "you matter." So this video is simply a message to and from our entire Springford Area School District community. Enjoy.
All of the dreams that haven't come true, and all of the hurt that happened to you, it matters. I hope you know it matters. You felt the pain of a bitter defeat, where the weight of the grief is more bitter than sweet, it matters. I'm telling you, it matters.
Tu es important.
Tu es important. You're important in any language.
Papa, madre, hija, te vas a llevar.
Me llamo Karen Awad.
Ni hao zhong yao.
Ni hao zhong yao.
Tu es importe.
No matter what language you speak
Or where you come from in this great big world
You matter.
If you think the world would be a better place without you, or you think that nobody will miss you, you're wrong.
You matter.
You matter, just the way you are.
You matter.
Springford, you matter. You make a difference and your impact cannot be measured.
You matter.
You matter.
You matter!
I wish I could meet you, shake your hand, and say hello to you in person. Do you know why? Because you matter.
When you think no one cares and you don't matter, you matter. This community and school need you. If you need help, we're here. We have resources for you to use when you need them, all because you matter.
You matter.
You matter.
So glad to see you at school.
You matter.
Springford wouldn't be the place it is without you.
Seeing your faces come into school makes me a happier person.
You matter to the community because without you, we'd be missing a vital piece of our puzzle.
If you're concerned about yourself, a friend, or someone else, please contact a school administrator, a teacher, school counselor, or even an adult.
Do not keep this a secret. There's always someone out there willing to help.
If you are in need of support, ask for help because you matter.
We can help you if you're in need. You matter.
Believe it. You matter.
Always remember that you matter.
You matter.
You matter.
Ask for help because you matter.
You Matter is a movement to spread the word that your problems, your worries, your fears, and above all, you, the unique and real you, matter. And just because about everyone at some point hits the wall, we're here to help. The Springford Area School District has resources available to students, families, and employees. We also partner with organizations in our community to provide services to those in need. Because when you really think about it, those two words, "you matter," can make a world of difference to someone who needs to know, needs to feel, and needs to believe that they matter.
I would hate to follow that up with the solicitors report.
Nobody's ever said that. Very briefly, there'll be three policies on the agenda for next week through a first reading. Our office is taking a look at them. A couple of them have been to us already in the spring. They're now back to us for a final review before a first reading next week. The other issue, and I'm not so sure how much the board gets in terms of communications from Simon Campbell, but we received yet another right-to-know request from Mr. Campbell. I believe, and I've mentioned this before to this board, that most of his IR is focused on the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, and there are certainly hints of that in this most recent request, where one of his major requests is for template policies that the PSBA shares with its member organizations. So we are handling that. You are not alone. Every district, every CTC, every IU has received the same request from Mr. Campbell again. So that is my report.
Thank you. Okay. Meeting, any questions, A and B? Personnel, A through D? Finance, A through H? Programming Curriculum, A?
Are these additional funds or are these the total? There are addendums, so I'm just curious if this is then going to be the new number or if this is in addition to what was previously there?
I believe they're additional.
Sorry, yes, they are additional funds to the original contract.
Thank you.
Okay, Programming Curriculum, A? Conferences and Workshops, A through C? Other Business, A through J? Before we go to Board Comment, I do have one question. I was talking with Dr. Gooden under the action item, and we noticed that it should have said replacing Instead of Michael DiCaro. I don't know if that's an issue or not. Instead of Michael DeCaro. I don't know if that's an issue or not with the motion. A, Action Item, A?
Mr. DiBello, the 10-month position that was available was Mr. Kit DeCaro's. Mr. DeCaro did fill Dr. Moore's position, so we're actually backfilling Mr. DeCaro's position.
Okay. I should have just asked you from the beginning. Never mind. It's all good. All right, any more comment? Public to be heard. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, favor say aye. Aye, meaning adjourned.